Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Bladensburg Council Work Session for Monday, May 9th. We want to call tonight's meeting to order and say a happy belated Mother's Day to all of the mothers who are here in the Zoom room, but also all the mothers in the Town of Bladensburg. We hope you all had a beautiful and lovely holiday with your loved ones on yesterday. And so with that, we will move right into the agenda. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I did want to ask the council for an amendment, so I'll go into that once we get to discussion. But is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved by Councilmember McBride. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. One of the things coming off of our employee appreciation event on Saturday was recognition that this is National Police Week. And so wanted to ask if the council would be open to doing a proclamation in honor of National Police Week. And so we can have that read if the council is amenable to adding that under New Business.
Mayor James.
Yes, Councilmember Rout.
Yes, thank you. I would like to add the mental health awareness event on there as well because there's some updates.
Okay, thank you for that. And Councilmember Brown, I think I heard your voice as I was writing. Did you have an addition?
No, no addition. I was just going to answer the questions.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I."
"I."
"I." Any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Mr. Charnovich?
Yes, Mayor. No minutes for the work session this evening for approval. I did not get to finish them.
No worries. So we will have those for the June 6th meeting. And at this time, we will move right into item four, which is appearances. And we're happy to be joined by Ms. Renee Green of our Patriotic Committee. Good to see you. I know it's been a while. And we'll turn it over to you for some updates and questions.
All right. Thank you so much. So good to see everyone. Thank you. We've got, you know, back on track here and out of the COVID and everything. So let's move along with what we've got. So we have the What the Flag Means to Me program, and that will be on the June 13th meeting. So we got to get those letters out, and I've been working with Diane on that. So we'll get that rolling as soon as possible.
Ms. Green, just one note. Diane may not have shared with you, but for June, we, as a council, will be attending the MML Conference in Ocean City. So the June meeting has been moved to June 6th. So just wanted to call that out.
Oh, that's okay. Okay. So it's been moved to June 6th. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. And then we've got Memorial Day coming up on May 30th, and that will be at 11 o'clock. And that will not be at the Peace Cross because of the construction that's going on. It will be at Memorial Park, though. Okay. I know that in the past, sometimes they've had a separate Fourth of July event, but we're going to be doing the event with the fireworks with the, so we're not going to have a separate Fourth of July event. And then Veterans Day, I know that, you know, it's six months away, but it will be here before you know it. And the thing of it is, is that the renovations with the Peace Cross should be completed by September. With that, you know, we wanted to do some type of renov-, you know, rededication. So a heads up on that is that the rededication will be on November the 11th. So I need to work with all of you to get a list of people, dignitaries, and the different town, you know, who will be in attendance. Because with the amount of people that we're afraid of having, we need to have a list, and we're going to need to have it fairly tight so that we have, you know, the rows of people and dedicated to where we're going to be sitting and this, that, and the other. And there'll be invitations and so forth and so on. This is through the Peace Cross Committee with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. So it's with the American Legion. Senator Augustine has been very helpful in that group. So it's a group of people that is leading this rededication. But we're going to need help from all of you all, too. Because I'm sure that you know that there's been so many people, and so many of you, especially you, Mayor, who have helped out with the Peace Cross and with everything and with the renovations, that, you know, you need to be, you know, on the front, the first lines, you know. So we need to coordinate with that and to get an invitation and a list of people that we would be inviting. The renovations, when we looked, I was able to meet with the architecture last month, and it was pretty exciting because they actually went right into the inside of the Peace Cross. So they did put a camera down there, and they were able to look around. It seems to be pretty good. Couple of little issues, but the structure itself is hollow inside. And there's like three layers to the outer part. And so they are removing parts of the outer part, and then they will be replacing that. So that all should be done by September. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that or anything else?
So just in general, I know you mentioned for What the Flag Means to Me, you're working with Mrs. Griffin Horn on that. So assuming you guys are all set with everything, don't need any support from the council at this point?
Yeah, as far as I know, I'll double check, but I think that we're okay with that.
Great. And then for Memorial Day, normally, once you send over the flyer, Mrs. Griffin Horn will send it out to all the elected officials. So as soon as you have that ready, just shoot it over to us. And I want to speak for Mr. Charnovich, our interim town administrator, but if you could help, as I said, usually Ms. Diane is the one. She's got the list, and it's easy for her to get that out.
I sent that over last week, so I think it's already gone out.
Perfect.
Richard, is that correct?
I do know that Mrs. Griffin Horn has been working on it, but I cannot confirm whether it has gone out to the officials yet, but I'll touch base with her.
Yeah, I know that the one that I sent in last week was approved. There wasn't any additional changes needed to be done. So we're getting there.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Green, for joining us and for all your efforts on the Patriotic Committee. We certainly appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll be in touch, too, and see you on May 30th, which is coming up pretty quickly here.
Oh, it is. It is. Just a couple of weeks away. And not part of the Patriotic events or anything, but I just want to point out that the We Lead by Example documentary about Dr. Thomas's life got in the Faith and Family Film Festival for this coming weekend down in Florida.
Congratulations. That's great news. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. That's great news. Good to pick me up.
You're getting all over, all over the world with this. Everyone knows Bladensburg, besides what they already know.
Wonderful. We love it. Well, thank you, Ms. Green. We'll move on with the agenda, but definitely reach out if you need anything else from our team, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you. And so that concludes the appearances for tonight's work session. We'll proceed on with road improvement projects for FY 2022.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I guess the first question I would ask is, is Purnell? Purnell, are you on the call? Is that your phone number there?
I think that is his number. Mr. Hall, can you hear us? It does look like his number. Let me see if I can maybe text him the link and see if that will help him get connected.
I can do the lead-in. I just didn't want to turn, I didn't want to turn it over to Mr. Hall if he wasn't on the call. So I just wanted to verify that, verify that initially, and then we'll go from there. Sorry about that. He and I did touch base, and he planned on being on the call this evening.
Okay, so Mr. Hall, I did just send you the direct Zoom link in case it's easier for you to just hit that from your phone and come back in, or sometimes just hanging up and calling in and reconnecting is enough to make a difference. Yeah, we still can't hear him. We can move on, and if he's able to join us, just come back to it because this is an important update on the road improvement plan. So the next item we actually have on the 7:00. Oh, yes, you're there. Yay! It's the Employee of the Year, Mr. Hall.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry about that. All these gadgets got going on. I apologize on everything on my behalf.
No problem. No problem. You joined at the right time. We're all excited about the road improvement plan, so we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, ma'am. And thanks for allowing me to present this to you. As we all know, we've been working hard on the road improvement plan. And I'm not sure y'all had the road improvement package that we developed around October 21st. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we gonna go, we gonna go down the line, and on the line, it's in sequence with the highest priority to the, you know, less priority is to my best ability. And as you see on the road improvement plan, the first project was 58th Avenue, which we got completed last year due to, you know, some delays. But the next project was 57th Avenue, and I think it'd be our best ability as a town to skip over 57th Avenue due to the amount of funding that's going to be required to that project, which you probably looking around the $300,000 range plus. And the next project will be the Decatur Codelac, which is a kind of a light project that includes a sum of no more than about $34,000, and that's what we have approved to you right now. I know that we are allowed or supposed to get three bids, but we was working on three bids. And due to some understandable circumstances, I was not allowed to get the third bid from Beltway Paving. I'm hoping that nothing happened because we met on site Wednesday before, you know, the town meeting, and he was required to get this project proposed to me by then. And I hear, I hear nothing from him, and I have an email from him saying that he won't be back into the office till the 12. So I don't know if we want to revisit, revisit it, or we have two bids at the moment that's reaching upon agreement through the Maryland Council. And if you want me to go through with the bids, there's no problem. I'm not for sure if Mr. Rich has sent it over to you. But the first bid we have is from College Paving, I mean, College Park Paving, which is in the price of $33,958. And then we have the next bid that's coming in at $30,752,000. And we can go over the scope of work, but it is a light scope of work that needs to be done. There's a little bit of concrete work on some curb and a little bit on an apron that ties into a curb. And if it's recommended by me, when you tie into a curb, you also have to do an apron to get the right elevation tied to a curb. So I wouldn't want the job done unless they was tying into the curb on a section that they was doing the apron, because you do not want any pond in the winter time or anything that will cause ice in front of anybody driveway or anything like that. So that's what I was looking at and what I was going through. The proposal, it seemed like one contractor, one company was allowing to do that at the cost of what they provided. And another contractor wanted more money to do the cost on the apron that was no more than about 50 by 20. And if you do the math on 50 by 20, material for the concrete and labor is no more than maybe like $700 or $800. So Pronto Paving was including that in as a bid. So that's why I was leaning a little bit more towards them, because as we all know, we want more bang for our buck, but we also want to make sure that the job is done right and completed.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I heard a pause in there. Were you just catching your breath, or was that the end of your remarks?
Yeah, that was kind of the end of my remarks, because that's the only two quotes that we have in. As we said, we were reaching out for three quotes, but at the meantime, we wasn't able to get that at the moment.
And Mr.? Mr. Hall, I did go back and dig through some really old emails, and I did find the procurement policy, and then also asked Mr. Charnovich and Mr. Tenelli to send it over to me. I read this thing three times, and I do not see where it says we have to have three bids in here. I remember hearing that in the past when we would have our talks and discussions about contracts. But in reading this, and if council members, if you want me to forward this to you, you know, I'll shoot this over. But it was like from back in my orientation days, but that isn't in here. I think it was just something that we prefer to do and just to make sure it's competitive. But given these are in the same ballpark, I think we're fine to move forward. I don't want to speak for the council and certainly want to give them the opportunity to speak. But if one was $100,000 and one was $15,000, then I think we'd have cause for concern and need that third bid to help us right-size this. But want to get feedback from the rest of the council as I just quickly wrap up and say, I totally agree with prioritizing Decatur Street. I've driven by, and it just, it's gotten so much worse. And with all the water and precipitation over the last couple of days, it just exacerbates the damage that's over there. So I definitely understand with prioritizing this for our next project. And given the HUR funds that we have, we've got enough to cover it. So totally appreciate you doing your homework and research and getting us to the best bids. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe Pronto, we've worked with before. So we do have a positive track record with them as one of our vendors. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. They...
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hall. That's okay.
Yes, ma'am. We did have them perform on a little small section of the 5400 block of Upstate Street. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just looking for hands from the rest of the team. Councilmember Rout. I was looking for the virtual hand, and I didn't even see it. It's blending in with the brown in the background. So thank you for the wave. Over to you.
Thanks, Mayor James. I wonder if we can compare this to the fee schedule that the county has. Maybe we can reach out to DEPI if that's needed. But I remember us having this issue last year where, because of COVID, a lot, we weren't able to get like three bids. But Decatur Street's pretty bad. So I don't know if we want to, if we could support Pronto paving and just, because it's not an emergency, but it's definitely bad. I would just like, I mean, we did our due diligence. We did reach out. And as a financial, fiscal, accountable government person, I would consider if we technically reached out, then that is a zero bid. Like, it's like, you know, I'm not interested in doing it if they did not, if they were not able to respond by a certain date. And so we did our due diligence with three, and that's just best practice. I just wanted to give that, that suggestion to the council to just going ahead and accept the third bid as a non-response, which would get us to three, which is our due diligence. I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout. Any further comments? Not seeing any other hands. We can move on. But again, Mr. Hall, thank you again. Because it is a financial matter, we will have to vote in the council meeting. But we'll, I will certainly ask for a recommendation, a motion to move forward with Pronto paving as the preferred. Just want to confirm that's your preference, yes?
Yes, ma'am. That's my preference. It's just because when you, when you're tying into an apron, as we know, and I'm quite sure we all know everyone in the Codelac is five residents in the Codelac, and we just don't want no pond. And that's what I'm really looking at is when we tying in from a curb and come into existence, concrete pattern, you kind of have to elevate to get the right elevation. So what we're trying to do as a town is no pond in new areas that we're performing any road projects at.
Yeah, and that makes total sense. Otherwise, we're chipping away at the concrete and going to be back in the same situation in a very short period. So I think you're right to just do it right the first time. And then my other question, Mr. Hall, was if the council votes to approve moving forward with Pronto paving, how soon can this start and roughly what's the timeline? And the reason I ask is because I want to make sure that we do some sort of mailed notifications to residents in the area since they'll have to move their vehicles, because I did see we can be charged if there's delays and them coming out and say they want to start at seven. Vehicles are still on property till 10 or 11. So just want to understand, you know, what the notification process is and then also what the rough timeline is. We know it can change subject to weather and other things.
Yes, ma'am. What they're saying on the contract and what I will be aware of and abreast of, and also help them push and move forward to, as a 72-hour, you know, giving the resident 72 hours prior to starting it, and also, as we know, it's not but a few cars up there. And we, we will deal with the resident on behalf of the town as well prior to that. And I'm quite sure all of them would be interested in moving, moving the cars and making sure that the cars are out of the way before, before start of work and after work. And approximately the work schedule or total time of completion, it has to be no more than about four days at the max, weather permitted.
Oh, that's fantastic. And yeah, I just was asking because with the weather starting to get warmer, I'd hate for someone to go out of town while we're trying to do this and leave their car parked on the street, you know. So that's good, 72 hours notice. And then also, if we make sure we put it in our e-blast to give as much heads up, too, once we're further along, just whatever we can do to give plenty of notice, I think is best on our side.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall. We appreciate you joining. You're welcome to stay on for the rest of the meeting. But we are going to move on to the next item, which is the fireworks, I'm sorry, road improvements. We covered, we went back to that. So that concludes New Business for the work session. Now, actually, Mr. Hall, I guess I have to come back to you for this exciting new purchase, too. You got a capital purchase for us.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I have it right here somewhere. That's where I know all the age, I mean, all the dump trucks and all the vehicles at some point in time needs to be, you know, replaced, not due to miles, it's just the age and, you know, going into the maintenance costs of it. We have a 1999 6500 GMC dump truck that was approved by the Maryland Council on the last budget meeting to replace it with a new 2022 International CBS 15 chassis. And I'm sorry to give y'all the worst spec of what they are, but in, in reality, a vision is probably one of the dump trucks of which that you see the county come through or anything like that. Not say big dump trucks with the triaxle, but the single triaxle is something that we prefer to use as we do on hauling, and it's one special haul that we do throughout the town. We do tire hauling, and that means we collect all the tires within the town on every Friday, and we have to dispose of it through a county facility in order for us to haul the proper amount of tonnage of tires that we get throughout the town. That piece of equipment or slash truck is suitable for us to use to do the hauling.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Hall. And as you said, I believe we did get the numbers on this. Was it the April meeting? I'm trying to remember. Yes, Mr. Charnovich? Your hand was raised. Did you want to jump in there? It's still muted.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor. We did keep this item on the agenda for tonight because wanted to be clear with the council and everyone and Mr. Hall that we were working towards getting this, this dump truck purchased as it was budgeted. So that we did run into a couple of challenges regarding the purchase of the dump truck. And I'm gonna, I'll give a lead-in, and if Vito wants to chime in, he can correct me if I say anything incorrectly. But one thing is my understanding there was $90,000 budgeted for the dump truck this fiscal year. One challenge is that the piggyback bid that we received is $98,000 for the dump truck. So it's $8,000 more than what was budgeted. But then a secondary challenge regarding the bid is that, as Vito, Vito helped me, helped point out to me that the full cost of the dump truck is not on the piggyback purchase price. So I think that it's like $65,000 of the 98, or approximate, is on the contract. And then the contractor, the bidder, the vendor, is, I guess, chopping the other portion of the dump truck out to another contractor, like $35,000 or so of those dollars. So the challenge we have there is, is if the full cost of the truck is not on the piggyback contract, that then will have to lead us to need to get bids for the second portion of that because it's over $10,000. So if we were to purchase this and on the piggyback, it would be the full cost, then we could just do it. But the challenge becomes the fact that it's not on the full cost of the contract. And with that said, Mr. Tenelli, did I explain that correctly, or you want to chime in and clarify?
It's that cabin chassis discussion that we had before with the ambulance purchase. So the cabin chassis is, we can get on a piggyback, a piggyback contract through something called Sourcewell that catalogs all the municipal and county bids throughout the country. But, you know, that's just for the cabin chassis, but the dump body has to get on top of it. And everybody makes, you know, dump bodies specific to their needs because they're And everybody makes, you know, dump bodies specific to their needs because they're tailored almost. So $33,000 of that contract, you know, is not on a, not on an open bid that I found. So an open contract that I found. So, you know, we could go ahead and say we did our due diligence, or we could just keep shopping and try to find a contract that has something close to it. So, but that's the issue because that's over that $10,000 threshold, you know? Half of it, Mr. Ross can jump in one second, you know, half of it or two thirds of it is on the contract, but the third of it isn't. You know, so it's, and that's the issue. It's not just like going out and buying a police vehicle that is on the, you know, is on the piggyback contract all day long because they're all stacked the same. And that's a difficulty.
Thank you, Mr. Tannely and Mr. Charnovich for that additional context. Councilmember Row, I want to come back to you. I know you had a comment.
Just wanted to ask, do we have to buy it in together or we can't buy it in pieces? Like, just buy the dump truck with the $98,000 that we have now. I just looked at their budget. They're well under their budget. I mean, they haven't even, I mean, they've been very fiscally responsible. And then just come back when we have it and then just get the dimensions. Is that not possible to buy the chassis and just add it on?
Purnell, if you're still on, I, yeah, I mean, that's, because of, yeah.
Yeah, it's possible. Excuse me, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, it's possible to do, but as we looking at the last two dump trucks that we get, we got in 2011, we still had to go to, as we all, all see on there, if I'm not sure if everybody see it, is a Moxley truck is what you do, which does maybe 80% of all the municipality dump bodies in Prescott County. So we can get the chassis, but we still are gonna have to go through a Moxley to put the dump body on there. And I'm not knowing that anybody out here that's closer to their bid price that we gonna get cheaper to put the dump body on the, on that type of vehicle, as I know of, as I know of.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hall. So at a minimum, it sounds like we're okay to proceed with the cabin chassis. That's at that 60K. And so we just need to put the, the bid out there for the actual dump body, which if the cabin chassis is being built or ordered, that gives us time, right, to go through the secondary process and come back, even if all roads lead us back to Moxley.
Yes, but that's not saying that we gonna get the same price as International doing it.
Gotcha. So, Mr. Hall, what is your recommendation for how we should move forward? Just based on your experience dealing with them?
Well, through experience and when you bring a truck or any type of piece of equipment, vehicle, you know, to your, to your municipality or to your fleet, as we want it to come completely. Now, if it was a big challenge of, of maybe, you know, something that's outrageous in ballpark figures in which we can go and try to see and get some prices of, of, of a dump body and taking a truck over there to get it equipped with the dump body, that's no problem. But if you're dealing with a vendor, most of the time, I want it come from the vendor completed to our shop.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just getting the finished product versus getting it and then having to take it back out for the additional work. Okay, Councilmember Brown, thank you. Sorry. Okay.
That's the way we've been doing it throughout the town. I mean, throughout, throughout that period, not saying that there's no one out there that can beat the price, but if you're taking the time to have someone take a truck at Moxley, which is almost an hour and a half away, have someone sit there, have someone come all the way back, doing all that, you kind of, you kind of bouncing out.
Yeah. When you could just take it to the one-stop shop and get it all done there. I see what you mean. Councilmember Brown?
Thanks, Mayor James. Thanks, Mr. Purnell, Employee of the Year. Congratulations again. My, my, have we, have we also tried to look at N and L for some, uh, 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 resources or direction or, yeah, have we looked at N and L? Because they may be able to, just to, you know, to, to provide some, some other companies with, where we can get some more pricing from, but I just want to know if we try to engage in it now.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I looked on Merlin Web through the Merlin State Contract, and what, what's going up right now is the Apple Ford. But currently, we do not have any Fords on our lot, and I'm not saying that we would not be interested in Ford, but throughout the 14 years dealing, you know, with Fords or Chevy is this a little problem with the Ford that I, I've, I've dealt with and the type of vehicle that we need with a Ford would be a little bit more than, you know, 65 or 7500, and it comes with a little bit more maintenance, as I've heard through experiences, and some municipalities, you know, locally wished that they didn't have a Ford on their fleet as that. So I don't want to put any more problems. And some of our guys and myself are kind of familiar with the Chevy Vortec engines, and we do minor maintenance in-house. And that's, that's the reason why I kind of stick with a Chevy, Chevy fleet.
Councilmember Brown, did that answer your question?
Yeah, well, well, that answered my question. That was good. And maybe that, that's something we can have a con, or yeah, someone can have a conversation with N and L about, you know, whether or not, you know, we do, whether or not the N and L has a relationship, because they do have relationships maybe in, maybe with Chevy to see where, you know, is, is that, is that just some, somewhere else we can, we can look? And, and you know, can kind of, kind of let us know, yes or no, if they do or not? Especially since they deal with all of the municipalities.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, absolutely. So, Mr. Charnovich and Mr. Hall, if you all could just check, and as Councilmember Brown suggested, just see if there's any relationships there that would help in a situation like this. But it sounds like everyone understands the need. We just want to make sure that we follow the right process in terms of getting it. We have the budget. Councilmember Row, now we're looking at it, you know, simultaneously, both of our heads went down and we see the money is there. So that is, you know, we're more than halfway there, but that would be helpful. So again, we can just make sure we follow our process to move forward. Mr. Charnovich or Mr. Hall, anything else you want to add?
No, ma'am. We can, we'll both sit down and reach out to N and L and see if they, they have any local vendors that we can piggyback on, you know, to see if we can bring this price down a little bit, whether it's the chassis or whether it's the dump body.
Okay, fantastic. Mr. Charnovich, anything else?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. So in general terms, I am very familiar with the, with the piggybacking, the process when it comes to procurement. I just think, I mean, with this particular item, you know, I'm hopping into this late as your interim town administrator. So I haven't had a lot of time to explore our different options with various, various things moving around here the last week with the, with our, with this meeting and everything else. But, so I think that we'll, we'll be able to come up with something, knowing that, excuse me. We still have one more regularly scheduled meeting before the end of the fiscal year. So I think that the administration can certainly be committed to getting this, this new dump truck purchased before the end of the year and the funds run out. Like, like you mentioned, Mayor, I think that the key point is to make sure that it's purchased in the guidance, in the guise of our, of our policy, just as we touched on for the, for the road project on Decatur Street moments ago. And then we can also work out, as, as you said, the money is available in the budget in different categories within Public Works. Maybe if we find it, potentially find a different option, it'll end up being at the 90K or less. We're not sure yet. So maybe we won't even need to worry about the moving, moving line item numbers to go over budget. But, yeah, I think we'll, we'll get it done. And we wanted to keep it on the agenda to make sure that the council and and Mr. Hall and every, Mr. Tannely, everybody was aware that we, that we are, want to get this done. It's just a matter of, of when. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Charnovich. So definitely appreciate you and Mr. Hall agreeing to just keep moving forward and trying to get the best price that we can. The next item that we'll move on to is the fireworks proposal for 2022 July 4th event. Mr. Jeffries, is that you?
Yes, it is. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be on this call today to finally present the potential proposals for our Blaisberg fireworks event. I wanted to share my screen really quick, if I can.
Mr. Gray, can you please give Mr. Jeffries the ability to share his screen?
Okay, thank you. So I reached out to four different vendors over the last month or two. And these are the vendors that I came up with. The first vendor is Image Engineering, which was the vendor from the 2019 event. And the status of the proposal is still awaiting, but we know that they are unable to do the rain date, which is July 2nd. The second vendor that I reached out to is called Sky Shooter Displays. They were able to send over a proposal with a contract permit and insurance, and the total cost would be $13,000. And they also threw in a free fake finale with a total of 3,910 shells. The third vendor is Fantastic Fireworks. Earlier this morning, well, Sunday morning, they were able to provide me with a proposal that included references, permits, and insurance. And the total cost was $10,000 with 3,898 shells. And a vendor that I reached out to last month was Zambi Lee Fireworks, but they were unavailable for the Friday original date and the rain date. So so far, I think the number one frontrunner is Fantastic Fireworks due to the price. And, you know, we really get our, a bang for our buck with this vendor here, Fantastic Fireworks. If you guys have any questions about the event so far, feel free, but today I just wanted to really go talk about the proposal. But if you guys have any questions about the event itself, then feel free to ask.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jeffries, for the overview. Definitely looking forward to safely assembling this year. Residents have been asking about it and missing it. I do like your recommendation and just want to make sure. So the vendor that you're recommending, they're the ones that do the fake finale? Or was it the other guys?
The one I'm currently recommending now is the $10,000 one. But the one that first, at first was the first frontrunner. They did the fake finale. But this morning, when we received the proposal from Fantastic Fireworks, they became the number one contender.
Gotcha. Okay, so when we talked, it was before that second proposal came in. Got it? Okay, all right. Any questions from the council? I believe we have this on the agenda for tonight's 7 o'clock meeting. Just double check, yes, so that we can vote on whether or not to proceed with Mr. Jeffries' recommendation.
Mayor James?
I didn't, I'm trying to scroll. Sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Row. I'm trying to scroll because it, when he shared his screen, it changed my view, so I can't see everyone now. But go ahead.
So we know how many shells we had, like, at the last one, to give us a point of reference?
So that information I don't have with me right now, but that is a great point to bring up. But I can say that the Fantastic, the Fantastic Fireworks said that the total show would be 18 to 20 minutes long. But I'm unsure of the previous total shows.
Okay, thank you. So we just won't have a finale? So that's essentially what it is. It's just.
One finale.
Oh, yeah. So we will have a finale.
Yes.
Okay, as long as we have one.
That's it? Councilmember Row, sometimes when you go to these, they'll do what you think is the finale, finale, and everyone applauds and it stops. And then they come back with the boom, boom, boom. So that's the thing. We won't get that, but we'll still have a finale.
That's fine. I was like, we not gonna have a finale? That's not right. Okay.
So what kind of show is this?
Go home, everyone. Good night.
Exactly. Bye-bye. Councilmember Brown, I see your hand.
But we won't have fireworks, all right?
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Jeffries, for continuing the planning and making sure that we're on track to have a successful event. And so maybe at the next meeting, you can share other ideas that you and the staff are working on, so everyone gets even more excited about the event, and we can maybe solicit some volunteers at that time. All right. Thank you, sir.
No, Mayor, excuse me. Did I hear Ms. Remay Green mention that they're collaborating with, with the town to do the fireworks?
Yeah, so instead of the separate ceremony, when we used to do the laying of the wreaths for the Independence Day ceremony up at either the Memorial Park or Peace Cross, the idea is not to do two separate events, but just for the Patriotic Committee to support the fireworks program. And so last time, when Ms. Green was helping us, she helped secure a student singer for the program and some other participants. So we'll look forward to working with her on that.
Okay, I didn't know she was alluding to maybe some funds for fireworks, but okay.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you. And continuing with community engagement, I wanted to share something with the council, which is in your packet. It has Elizabeth Seaton's information sheet for what they're calling Seaton Summer Fest on June 11th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And the idea is that because the campus hasn't been as open to the community because of the pandemic with the new leadership at the school and Dr. Grio, the school wants to do something to really connect with the community. And so that's what they're, why they're terming this Summer Fest. And so the idea is that there'll be music, food trucks, a beverage garden, alcohol-free beverage garden, because this is family-friendly, and activities for the children. They'll be giving away seating gear and having raffles. And so Mrs. Monica Horton, who is one of the administrators, reached out to ask if the town would be interested in being a sponsor of the event. The, the sheet that's in the packet shows the different levels, so from $100 to 1,500. And so in looking at the budget, in the town council budget area on the line item for community events, I noticed that we are, we've been very prudent. Obviously, some of that has been just reduction in events because of COVID. And so because we have some bandwidth there in the budget, wanted to ask if the council would be amenable to supporting as a gold sponsor or a scarlet sponsor. And mainly because I want to support it so they, it helps with the food and some of the activities. But also, as the town, we should be one of the top sponsors of the event. So ideally, I'd love to support at that $1,500 level to make sure that there's, you know, adequate visibility for the town as part of this event. So want to call for questions or comments at this time? None? Okay.
Raising my hand.
Okay.
Now there it is. I'm not, I'm not, I just want to, I would want to say Elizabeth Seaton, I mean, they have been, over the years, they've just been. Um, I'm, I, I just want to, I would want to say Elizabeth Seaton, I mean, they have been, over the years, they've just been very, very, uh, um, open in, um, allowing the, the, the town and supporting the, um, the town when we want to host events and activities there. So I just want to, um, yeah. So I, I definitely, definitely think we should support, but, but, but they've always supported. And whenever we would go to Elizabeth Seaton and ask her to use their gym or their kitchen or whatever, um, and even with their students volunteering, they've always been, you know, forthcoming and, and, and they've always said yes to us.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Councilmember Brown. Mr. Jeffries?
Thank you, Mayor James. Uh, my question is, um, in the packet, does it say anything about marketing for the town or does the town get its logo on the fire or anything like that?
Yeah, great question. As our chief marketing person, always thinking about the town's visibility, and I love that. So we get prominent signage at the event, recognition from the stage throughout the event, our name and logo on Seaton Family Day event map and promotional materials. So yes, we do get that visibility as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilmember McBride, your turn. I'm sorry. Thank you for being patient, trying to go around this little visual thing here.
That's all right. Um, good evening, everyone. Man, I just want to make sure I heard you right, because I thought you said that there will be Seaton gear giveaway? It says sales on our paper.
Um, where I'm reading from, on the, is it second paragraph? Let me go back up. So the second paragraph says this, the event will include music, food trucks, a beverage garden, activities for young children, Seaton gears, oh, sorry, sales, not giveaway. I'm sorry. I conflated raffle and sales. Thank you for calling that out. Seaton gear sales and a basket raffle. You're, yes. So they do also indicate that, um, the event response was requested by May 1st, but I did explain to Mrs. Horton, I wanted to bring this before the council today and get back to her. So she's, um, she was willing to just give us an extension on that dead, deadline. Councilmember Routh?
Thank you, Mayor James. I am agreeing with you and Councilmember Routh that Elizabeth Seaton has been excellent support, um, to community organizations, um, to host things there. Anytime we've called for like tables or chairs or anything, they have been, um, very supportive. Um, and I think this would be a great opportunity for members of our community, um, can understand what Seaton brings to the table, um, because as just a newer resident, you may, you know, residents may not know who Elizabeth Seaton is. Um, it's a staple in our community, and I do think that this is, um, the worthwhile of, um, our partnership.
Yeah, thank you for that. I totally agree with you all in every single thing that was said in terms of the partnership and going back for so many years. Um, for example, the staff event on last Saturday, had they not had another event the same night, it would have been at Seaton. So to your point, Councilmembers Brown and Routh and McBride, that's the kind of partner that they are. And even when I saw Mrs. Hernick, um, who has literally worked there for over 40 years, I think she started when she was 12, but I had to go up there for something. And that was the first thing she said, I am so sorry, we can't do the town's event. We had something else on the books, so I just let you know. They really do care about what we're doing and want to support. So we do have that on the seven o'clock meeting. So I'll proceed on with the agenda to the next item, which is, um,
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. I do have my hand up. That's okay.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was from last time. That's all my, my fault.
Just real quick, I want to be mindful of the time that is 6:25, kind of with the time.
Thank you. Cause I, it's funny, I looked down and was like, oh, shoot, my goal was to be on the budget discussion by now. Um, okay, so I'll try to pick the pace up here. So the next thing is the End Time Harvest Ministry Scholarship. I know I got , uh, messages from Councilmember Brown on this as well as the email from Councilmember Routh. So I'll turn it over to whoever wants to start first, Councilmember Routh.
I will yield to Councilmember Brown.
Okay.
If I don't remember my email.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Okay, I just, uh, uh, really, really, really quick. Uh, this year, uh, just, uh, want us to, to support, to grant scholarship funding to the, uh, Bladensburg High School students who are a part of, uh, the, um, of, of her program. And we just, and there, there's a time period and we need to, to, to discuss if, if everyone's on board with that, discuss what that amount is. And it will go directly, the, um, scholarship money will, um, be made directly, um, uh, uh, out, uh, to the institution. So, and it was hopefully go into their, the students' packets. But, uh, will be made directly to, to the institution that the students are, um, will be attending. And then the, and then the amount to be checked.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I think that makes perfect sense to invest in our young people. And I guess the recommendation I wanted to hear was, is there a certain dollar amount that you had in mind? I know our 47th delegation also does scholarships and a lot of the recipients are part of Reverend Gail's program. So just wanted to get a dollar amount so we can be thinking about it and then vote in the next meeting to approve it. Cause I know when we talked to have it agreed upon, the checks cut to the institutions and part of the presentation at the end of this month is not urgent, but it, we have a little bit of a time constraint. So I just want to make sure we can help as much as we can as a council.
And I spoke to the Senator Chief of Staff and, um, the scholarships that they typically give out, they're between 500 and 1,500. That's, that's the range.
Okay. And do we know how many Bladensburg students are, um, graduating from End Time Harvest Ministries this year? Councilmember Brown, you said yes. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, between eight or nine.
Okay. So would the council be open to, what do you think, in 250 a piece or 500? I'm just trying to look at our budget. I know overall we're at, um, and this is again through the end of April, so we're at 74% of budget. Um, through the end of April, in terms of community events of the 35,000, we've only spent 13,790. And so, um, say, you know, if it's nine students times 540, 500 total, um, it wouldn't put us over for this line item? Or is there another recommendation? Um, Councilmember Routh? I'm sorry, I saw your hand earlier when you were chatting and did it go down or is that new? Okay, let me turn it over to you.
Yeah. So, um, is there a reason why we would cut it to the institution and not the young person? Um, oftentimes there are associated fees and items that young people need when they are going to college. Um, and I would say for $500, I mean, sometimes they have dorm fees, sometimes, you know, they need care packages to, you know, start school books and things of that nature. Um, so I'm just wondering why we would just cut it directly to the institution and not just to the young person?
Yeah. Thank you for that, Councilmember Brown. At, when, I'm sorry, Councilmember Routh, I believe, uh, Councilmember Routh, um, the names have to stop rhyming. Thank you, Councilmember Routh. When Councilmember Brown was speaking, she mentioned, um, she had reached out just to see what the best practice was that the 47th delegation does with their, how they cut their checks since they've been doing their program for so long. And it was their process is to make the payment directly to the institution on the student's behalf. Um, I thought it was a great idea when we talked about it, simply because it ensures, because we're giving tax dollars away, that they go directly to that institution and not to a weekend trip to Ocean City or something else. But I think you raised some really good points in terms of what about books? What about those other fees that may be billed differently or may, may need to be paid differently than directly to the institution? So I really appreciate you bringing up those items. But Councilmember Brown, I don't want to speak for you and want to just give you the opportunity to share.
Um, that was a very, thank you, um, Mayor, and thanks, uh, Councilmember Routh. Uh, I mean, you brought up a very, very good and, and, and invalid point, you know, it's, I, I, it's not like we give them 5,000 or 500,000 dollars. You know, if, if the amount is $500 and, and i- if, if that's how it's decided, just pray that, that they spend it like they're supposed to spend it. Um, but I, 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 I am, I am open to that as well because, because as you brought to the, to the, um, to the attention is that there are some preparation things that, that need to happen as well for, before they even get there. So I, I can go.
Thank you. Okay. And Councilmember McBride, as our resident higher education, uh, expert here?
Um, if I recol, if I recollect, I know for Prince George's Community College, usually when a student is given money, it will go to the, uh, to the accounting department. And then they just, the student is able to go to the cashier and request that a certain amount of money be used for, um, if they want to go for books or if they want to go for purchasing items that they need, like laptops or this supply, they're able to give them that money. And with a, a slip that they take to the store rather. And they use, that's the way the PG did it. But I'm not sure about other companies.
Yeah, that's a good, a good reference point. And then Mr. Charnovich, I'll, um, turn it over to you, recognizing it's 6:32. So, um, I'll try to, as I said, pick up the pace with the remaining items. Go ahead, Mr. Charnovich.
I just want to help with some information for everyone. Um, I received a clarification email I just put up on my screen from Reverend Addison that there are, um, seven Bladensburg graduates. So I just wanted to give you, um, the exact number. So you have that for your, for your deliberation.
Yeah, thank you for that. So that is helpful. Um, so Councilmember Brown or Routh, would you recommend 500 to 50, what amount? So at least we can give it some thought and be ready in the next meeting.
750.
Per student?
Per student, yeah.
All right. Great. So we have it on the agenda for further discussion in the next meeting. Uh, the next item, absolutely. The next item is the Mayor and Town Council discretionary funds, Mr. Tenelli. Do you want to just bundle that into the budget so we can keep running down quickly? Up to you.
I, I could just talk about briefly.
Okay.
As a woman, man, I know. See, Mr. Mr. Tenelli is going, he's going to be about another 20 minutes.
You already know.
Um, one minute. How's that? Um, I know you're calling me out. Okay. Um, uh, every fiscal year, the mayor and council gets $500 each, each discretionary funds. Now, I had to put a little asterisk on this one because, um, we had a previous council member on this fiscal year that already spent her fiscal, uh, already spent her allotment. So even though there's $2,500 budgeted, now there's going to be 3,000 expended. Now, there's another, another little hiccup. Um, one of the things that was approved in FY '21 wasn't purchased until July of FY '22. Um, and so the total expenditure is going to be 3,500 instead of $2,500 for this fiscal year, um, against budget. But a- as you pointed out, Mayor, the mayor council is under budget anyway, so I don't see that as an issue.
Great. Thank you for that update, Mr. Tenelli. So if we don't, I know, I was surprised, my timer didn't even go off. So, um, if we don't have recommendations tonight, at least we still have the June council meeting.
Yeah. I just want to put this on everybody's radar to have something to bring next meeting, you know, so. And, and please have it written out, you know, and who it goes to exactly and a good address, because we, we've had issues where you know, they say, give it so and so. Well, you know, they call it something, but that's not the official name. We couldn't find the address, couldn't find the contact info. So as much complete information as you can get to us, um, the better.
Yeah. And if possible, if there's a form that could quickly be created that we could get to each of the students, so that way they complete it, fill it out, who, who the check needs to be payable to. And then at least for auditing purposes, we have some sort of paper trail for it. Um, that would be helpful. Uh, the next item, I believe, Councilmember Routh, you had asked for PG CMA elections to be on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. So the, um, current officers, there was a lot of, um, unforeseen circumstances. And, um, at the PG CMA meeting, um, it was requested by everyone in attendance that the current officers serving in the president, vice president, secretary, um, positions remain, um, because a lot of them haven't even served a full term. Um, and then there is a board, the board of directors, um, this council member was recommended to serve on next year's board of directors. Um, and there are seven at-large positions and there are no opposition. So, um, the vote needs to be taken at this general body meeting. And so I'm just requesting an official, uh, vote from this body for just the slate, which is just these seven positions and the current seated PG CMA officers. Are you out?
Great. Thank you for that, Councilmember Routh. Um, any questions before we jump ahead? All right. So Vio, I'm going to try to pick up the pace because I know we still have to get over into the, um, budget discussion because we did advertise that we would be, um, sharing that with the community and having that discussion tonight. Um, so first I want to address something that, um, has been on the top of minds for our police department in particular, which is LEOPS. And so I want to just share where the council is in terms of a decision. So during a, and actually, let me start the timer. Make sure I don't go over. Uh, five minutes. Go. Okay. So during a staff meeting with the town council on August 4th, 2021, officers asked the town council to consider or reconsider the law enforcement officer's pension system, which essentially is a retirement system that provides sworn officers a pension after 25 years of service. The town council recognizes the importance of a retirement system that will allow for Bladensburg's warrant officers to retire after years of service, but also wear and tear on their bodies and provide an opportunity for officers to speak, spend more time with their families. The town council also recognizes LEOPS as a strong recruitment and retention tool for our police department. The council agreed to financially fund an actuarial study to explore the town's commitment into LEOPS. And this was last fall, following the August staff meeting. The town submitted the application for the actuarial study, which was due on August 27, 2021. On April 7th, 2022, a letter was sent to the town with the outcome of the study. And we were told we had to make a decision by April 25th to proceed with the process. The timing seemed rushed, so the council asked the state retirement system for more time to consider, as well as a meeting to talk through the information in the study. We met on April 20th and had a representative from the state retirement system walk us through the analysis. After thoughtful consideration and lengthy deliberations and separate conversations, the council has come to a decision regarding LEOPS in 2022. The council is unanimous, unanimously supportive of this retirement plan. The town council understands the cost of the plan in today's dollars, and the town council, in collaboration with the directors, need time to determine where the funding will come from to support this retirement benefit, as this benefit is a commitment. With this in mind, the town council will hire a consultant to financially plan for the funding of the LEOPS retirement benefit for the Bladensburg Police Department's sworn officers. We recognize there are programs that the Bladensburg Police Department is working towards, such as the speed camera and ticketing programs that can fund LEOPS. Hiring a consultant to map out a plan will provide us with data points as well as realistic sense of the revenue we can anticipate year over year to fund this LEOPS plan. Again, I want to stress, every single member of the town council expressed agreement on the merits of this retirement plan and commitment to working with the team to get us on the merits of this retirement plan and commitment to working with the team to get us to a yes. As leaders, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sound financial decisions that impact the town both now and into the future. So I want to lay out some of the factors we had to consider in coming to this conclusion for 2022. The cost of this plan is approximately $310,000, based on 20 sworn officers that are currently enrolled in our state retirement system from the police department. The town transitioned from a 457B plan several years ago, and there was a cost of $744,000 to do so. While we've been paying this fee down on an annual basis, we still owe $111,000 on this plan that needs to be paid off. It isn't prudent to embark on another plan while still repaying this debt. We also have to ensure sufficient budgets to continue funding state retirement for our civilian staff, which costs approximately $170,000 annually. While state retirement is offering us an annual $125,000 phasing credit to offset the increased costs, the additional cost of joining LEOPS would burden the town with an additional $185,000 annually. This would only increase as we continue to make salary improvements to be more competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions and would also increase if we expand our police force. While we agree the funding for LEOPS can be derived from speed cameras, we have to be honest and say, as of today, May ninth, 2022, we have not yet received any revenue from the traffic enforcement or speed cameras. Making a 25-year commitment to LEOPS on behalf of town taxpayers without having a clear understanding of the revenue trends is not something we are willing to do at this time. The town council, in consultation with the directors, understands the importance of pay and benefits. With this understanding, the town council and directors will use this budget session to continue efforts to make salaries of sworn police officers comparable to neighboring jurisdictions. The town council will discuss and ultimately approve adjustments to our annual budget to increase the salaries of our sworn officers, which will become effective July first, 2022. As we move forward, again, want to stress, as the timer goes off, I want to stress the council expressed commitment to working with Chief Collington, getting a consultant and with members of the police department to form a small task force to continue efforts to help us get to the yes. If you are interested in serving on the task force, please contact Chief Collington with your interest. So again, wanted to make sure that our staff members, who I'm sure are watching this evening, understood a lot of thought and deliberations went into that decision. With that, Mr. Tenelli, I want to turn it over to you to get us to the FY twenty-three budget discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mayor, council, staff, and also our valued citizens that are listening. I'm going to share my screen really quick. Did it come through? Everyone see it? Okay, good.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, I lost my. Okay, we had some, we had a very good budget discussion on Thursday, made some changes. I sent out the changes really quick to the mayor and council in a Word document. Some of those changes we made were to, we created an ARPA department and we moved the ARPA manager out of administration and pushed it, put it over into the ARPA budget. And I took the, some one-time costs, the computer expense that was on the administration and on public safety for computer replacement cost. Those two totaled $20,000 since they were one-time. I went ahead and put them over in ARPA as well, anything to try to lessen the burden on our operating budget right now. Get to that in a minute. One of the things we talked about with Public Works is we increased the building maintenance back up to the prior level of $50,000, because what was in there, $15,000, we determined. It just, it just isn't enough, even though we haven't spent the last couple of years. We have aging buildings and two or three projects could easily eat that up. And we also increased highway user projects back up to $150,000, especially with Mr. Hall talking about our road improvement program. And we do get funding for highway user revenues. And the, and also added in the ARPA budget, the annual cost of the Shot Spotter program of, I believe, around $50,000. I think they gave us like a discount, it signed up early at 40,000, but it's place order for 50,000 right now. And so that goes through legal and gets approved and everything, and hopefully they can still honor the pricing. Other notes, we did have a, because of inflationary pressures, we did have 2% merit, but also, which is based on meritorious service, but also we had 7% COLA in the town administrator's budget because of the CPI, the average of the CPI in the bottom arm in Washington metro areas. And that, between the COLA and merit, based on the current staffing level, it adds about an additional $323,000 overall. So we moved some things over to the ARPA budget, one-time costs and the ARPA manager, and also the Shot Spotter program. We moved out the police vehicles that we talked about too. We have four police vehicles that we had in the public safety budget. I skipped over that, I'm sorry. And, and also the replacement of the police radios, we moved those over to ARPA as well, all the one. So anything like, you know, the one-time cost. But we still see results in inflationary pressure, like the increase in fuel that we're seeing. We're going to have increased insurance costs because of the nature of the game with police liability insurance and workers' comp insurance. We added, we added some things for the contractual services under mayor and council to cover the traffic and parking study, a human resources manager, to cover the lobbying, the lobbying costs. And, and we, and we put back in a public works worker that was not hired this year but, and fell off the town administrator's budget for FY twenty-three. But we went ahead and added that back in the budget because then we determined the need is still there, even though the position has not been filled. So I'm trying to watch my time, I'm not going to go through everything. I said the summary page up here. But where it leaves us is we still have this transfer from fund, from fund balance of 614,000. Now, if you look at this year, we have in the budget 536,000 transfer from fund balance. We're not going to use this. We may, I'm thinking we'll finish the year without having to use any transfer from fund balance because we're going to, we're expecting strong income tax revenues and personal property tax filings. But as a percentage, this is still about what the percentage is of the FY twenty-two level. That's a good thing, if you can find a good thing about it. But the problem is, it's still a $614,000 pull that we have to make in order to balance the budget. Now, we've done this every year, unfortunately, we haven't had to use any, any of our fund balance because we budget 100% of the positions, 100% full all the time. Okay, you know, that's how we budget. And reality is, you know, we run a couple vacancies, at least really about four to five vacancies. And with those vacancies, you have also, it's not just salary. I mean, salary is about seventy, sixty-five percent of the cost, but it's all the associated benefits with it there too. That's our biggest expense, and that's also, you know, but we try to budget those 100% because you just, you know, you have to, you know. So it's, we always try to get to 100% staffing level, you know. Everything we're doing for salary improvements and employee recognition. We're trying to make this, you know, this is a great place to work. I mean, you know, staffing place, great place to work, because we've got to get the word out, you know. So we don't like to see people leave. Sometimes the grass isn't always greener, but, but that's where our savings usually comes from in the budget. It's from the employee vacancies, but still, you know, we're still grappling with the 614,000 difference between revenues, which really the only thing helping out revenues is before ARPA, is this 3% increase in the property tax assessments, okay? Now, we do have the ARPA funds in here under federal funding. We got to keep those under federal funding because our federal dollars have to be tracked. And that all, and that offsets those costs I talked about, but, you know. But ARPA is there and other agencies are using it to fill the holes, to fill the gaps. So I'm just showing you what, you know, if everything that, you know, in the town administrator's budget and what the mayor and council have talked about wants to happen, we're still going to have this hole to fill. And, and we can, you know, find things under ARPA funding, you know, things that are the inflationary has to do with, you know, the pandemic and everything, which causes inflation, supply chain issues. So it causes things like fuel to go up. And causes us to raise our salaries so our employees can match what's going, or they're still going to fall short unfortunately with fuel, but match what's going on with inflation. And increase another one-time cost, so. I'm just putting it all out there now. So again, this is a town administrator's budget. I'm trying to get it to, you know, to balance out with what the previous town administrator and with the mayor and council is trying to do, because this is important, because this sets policy too for you. And I'm watching my time too, so I'm going to stop talking here, so you all have a chance to talk about it.
Sure, and I'm watching the time, Vio, it's six fifty-one, so I'll go quickly. But one thing that we talked about was a consultant who can help us map out a plan and stand it up to fund LEOPS. So we would definitely need to add that in here. And then we also, there was agreement from the council about doing something to try to make our police officer salaries more comparable to neighboring jurisdictions of the same size. And so I know we don't have time to get into it now, but if, you know, something can be shared with the council, so we can think about it, come to you guys with questions between now and our next budget meeting. And then that way, at the June meeting, be on the same page about what makes the most sense to put in there, because we do want to keep our commitment to that, as we just shared with everyone in the statement from the council.
Mayor James?
Was that Councilmember Route? I'm sorry, I'm trying to scroll, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Quickly, do we know the gap or the recommended percentage that we need for to be comparable, Chief Collington, Mr. Tenelli, to the, just so that we can start understanding what is the gap between our officers and other departments of a comparable size in Prince George's County? Or, you know, just in comparison, what's, what are we looking at?
Chief, can we take it since you're on mute?
Or Chief, Chief, do you mind speaking to that?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor, council colleagues and community. So what I did was I asked the, a couple of our officers to, you know, I always pull a committee, small committee together. And we did a search on eight different municipalities surrounding us and one county over. But similar in size and the police services are similar. And we are the lowest paid right now, and our current salary is 56,680. And we are the lowest of eight police departments, municipalities in the surrounding area. So I also asked Mr. Tenelli if he would give me some percentages on increases. And so we were asking for, you know, we want the council to consider a 20% increase for our officers, for staff across the board. And I think that would be, that will make us pretty comparable because we have departments now that are paying 62, all the way up to 72. The highs we saw was 93 for a lateral police officer. And one department said, they don't care what you make, we will match. So one of our employees was to go to that department that we pay a pretty good salary. They would match it and take their time. And, you know, these are the things that can not work out favorably for the town because we would be constantly, if they leave, we have to reinvest money in training and getting them back up to, up to speed. But if we lose our key employees, that will really hurt the town in the police department. So I'm asking that the council to please consider looking at a 20% increase for salaries across the board to make us compatible with the other surrounding jurisdiction. But right now, out of eight nice-sized police departments, we are the lowest paid in your, out of eight searches we did.
Thank you for that, Chief. And I think what would be helpful is if you could just give us like a grid of where we are and what the officers found in neighboring jurisdictions, just so the council can see how we stack up. Because that could be super helpful as well, as we come to agreement around whether or not to proceed with that 20% requested level. And, okay, so it's six fifty-six, Councilmember Brown, let me scroll back up, I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, yes, you did, but no, you said it, Mayor, just, you know, you already said it. Just give us a grid so that, you know, we're looking at and able to visually see those compares.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Tenelli, in our final minutes, anything else, or Chief Collington?
Five minutes, only have five minutes. For our next meeting.
Yeah, I would just say that this is before we realize any revenues from the traffic enforcement program as well. So that could be, you know, a nice, that could help out the budget a lot too, so.
All right, let's get it started.
Good point. All right, well, we look forward to getting more information so we can, again, take some steps to get us where we need to be. And so that completes the final item on tonight's work session. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second? Nobody wants to leave.
I'll second.
Councilmember Blunt, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Any nays? The ayes have it, we adjourn. Thank you so much.
Five minutes.
Actually, three, it's six fifty-seven.
Okay, my key was six fifty-nine, oh my God.